We're going to get started with the agenda portion of the meeting, which will be followed by the public portion. We have minutes from July 18th. And there are no coming hearings tonight. We have ordinances on second reading. ODS 08120 for ordinance to Grand Eaton for a portion of the right-of-way at Pine Street in the City of Brunswick, 279 Dibley Avenue. ODS 081205, ordinance to vacate a portion of Comstock Street and a portion of Delvet Street in the City of Brunswick. And I believe these are orders on first reading. We have ODS 091201, ordinance to amend and supplement the advisory of ordinances of the City of Brunswick. Chapter 12 Traffic and Parking, deleting two handicap parking zones, 5 Freedom Street and... Yeah, just on Towns and Streets? The Townsend Street location is right on the corner. The corner of the city's in 116th Avenue, it's actually right on the corner. I thought it's specifically to an address other than 116th Avenue. Which we cited in the ordinance. ODS 091202, it's a salary ordinance for FMBA, 50217, for 2009 to 2014. That's it on...
Mr. Resin, do you think it's likely that a fourth councilperson is coming to this?
I asked you to park. No, you know... I know the deck is not coming, but I don't know if they're...
If worse comes to worse, we could get around the home for that vote. The contract against...
Mr. Sherry, we gave for the fire contract, we give it to them, you can't make a vote.
First reading, they did make this week.
Oh, we can? We don't need that.
Good.
No, it's a valid adoption. Resolutions, RDS 091201, approved agenda amendments. 02, approved payroll for 84, 2012, and 817, 12, and also 818, 2012, and 831, 2012. 03, authorized refund for routine tax sales and dividends. 04, approved budget insertion from Chapter 159, Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office for the 2012 Quality of Life Award. Amount is $5,000. 05, resolution authorizing change of agenda name in Resolution RDS 081242. The reason is change the name of Quality Star Truck, doing business as Quality Star Freight Line, to Campbell Freight Line. 06, approved amendment in Resolution R-02, excuse me, 081210. Reason is to pay an additional legal fee in the amount of $2,680.25 for special counsel to Hill Wallach for the matter of Ian versus Ronan. From $37,525.3 to $40,280.25. 07, approved amendment in Resolution R-081233 to add additional grant agreement to Middlesex County on Aging in the amount of $10,000. This is being done non-pro-tunca as of August 1st. Senior Resource Center provides... 08, approved appointment of counsel, Lawrence Bitterman, for representation of Officer Christopher Bornheimer in the matter of Victor Rodriguez versus the City of Brunswick and others. Not to exceed $1,000. 09, approved request for use of city property. Walk, War Memorial Park, requested by Iglesia del Dia Viva for religious event with music and prayer. Saturday, September 8th. The rain day of Saturday, Saturday, September 22nd, 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. 10, approved request for use of city property to East Kilmer Park, requested by Iglesia del Dia Viva for religious event with music and prayer, Saturday, October 6th. Rain day, Saturday, October 20th, 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. 11, approved request for use of city property, Willow Park Jockey Pavilion, requested by Taxidermist Trinity for five paid walk-runners money for the Embrace Kids Foundation. Sunday, October 14th, 9:00 p.m. to 1:00 p.m. 12, approved request for street closing, Martha Street, beginning at 75 Martha Street, traveling out of Livingston, Welton, Joyce Kilmer, Townsend Lee, ending at 75 Martha Street. Requested by Our Lady of Metaparl Church for religious procession. Sunday, November 4th, 1:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. These activities required. 13, approved authorization to refit, requested by Department of Planning, Internet, Climate Development, Emergency Housing Shelter. 14, approved appointment of counsel, Stephen Alton, representation of Director Anthony Campluto in the matter of Victor Rodriguez versus the City of Brunswick and others, not to exceed $1,000. 15, approved amendments, resolutions, RDS 011249 to add an additional $600 to existing contract for 2012 authorized professional service agreement directing animal hospital for veterinary services for 2012, from $3,000 to $3,600. 16, approved award of contract to women aware, according to needs, housing to rebuild, take three apartments off of Madison Avenue for victims of violent violence, do not exceed, has changed from the agenda to $60,000 to $76,601. The resolution is correct over the... 17, authorized payment for emergency procurement for the police department for two tires for the narcotic surveillance vehicle with Malu Chevrolet Cadillac, $263. 18, approved personal transfer of license from M. and C. Flynn to... Okay, they said... 25 Little... Sorry. I apologize. 25 Little Street. 19, approved award of contract for three years of New World Systems for software maintenance for the police department. June 1st, 2012, through May 31st, 2015. Not to exceed $278,761. This is also being done non-pro-tunca. 20, approved authorization advertised for ADA compliant rams at various locations. 21, approved request for use of city property, Willow Park Pavilion, requested by National Lines on Mental Illness, or Can't Play Bingo for Mental Illness Awareness Week. Tuesday, October 2nd, 4:30 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. 22, approved request for use of city property, Willow Park Pavilion, requested by Lazos America, UNTAD Organization for Cultural Community Gathers, Mexican Council, Carlos Sada at Music with Music Dance and Information Day. Saturday, September 15th, the rain day of September 16th, from 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. 23, approved amendment of RDS 031253, to use of city property. Feast of Park Basketball Courts, requested by David O'Forrest, Men's Basketball League, Saturday, September 15th, 10:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. 24, approved request for use of city property, two parking spaces on Front 41 Madison Avenue, requested by Walt Blaskin, Dwight Blaskin for Parkway. Provide the community a place to eat and socialize. Friday, September 21st, for the rain day of Friday, October 5th, 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. 25, approved award of contract with Black Rock Enterprises for Somerset Street Road Improvement, not to exceed $500,000. 26, approved award of contract with S. La Pata Construction, Georgia Road Bedestre and Safety Improvements, not to exceed $171,587.50. 27, approved award of contract traffic line for the 2012 White Plate Designation, not to exceed $106,688. 28, authorized release of performance guarantee to Let It Grow, 126 College Avenue, the amount is $9,016. 29, authorized release of performance guarantee to Let It Grow for 145 College Avenue, the amount is $12,415. 30, approved award of contract with Stavola Asquod Company for Bikininess Materials, not to exceed $28,625. 31, authorized into local services agreement to the Brooklyn Board of Education for reimbursement for various services. 2012 to 2013 school year, $1,008,000. 32, resolution authorized City of Brunswick enter to an subordination agreement between New Jersey Departments for Renewal Associates and Bank of America. 33, approved budget insertion from Chapter 159, State of New Jersey, Iowa, the safety grant, the amount is $13,672.75. 34, approved budget insertion from Chapter 159, New Jersey Department of Transportation for College Avenue, 2012 Municipal Aid Program, the amount is $263,300. 35, budget insertion, approved budget insertion from Chapter 159, Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs, this week here. 12, 2012, for the Edward Burr Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program, the amount is $96,249. 36, approved long premises raffle at the Helders for the New Jersey Foundation for Aging, October 21st, 2012. 37, approved long premises raffle at Radman Valley Workshop for Easter Seals of New Jersey, November 8th, 2012. 38, New Brunswick Lions 2013 application. 39, resolution to set hearing date to determine license renewal condition for El Chapo Cal Resto. Which I believe is a 19th, correct? That's correct. 40, authorized into local services agreement to Brooklyn Board of Education for reimbursement for various services for 2012, 2013 school year. The amount is $1,100,000. 41, authorized tax collector to transfer over payments on several taxing utility accounts. 42, authorized the mayor and city clerk to sign and release two city holdings that have been paid off. 43, authorized the City of Brunswick to execute an agreement with Middlesex County regarding Think GIS and Think GIS Combat Manager Software. Non-pro-tunca, requested by the Brooklyn Police Department. And that's it on our resolutions. We had a manual for discussion by council. The electrical maintenance and repairs contract was carried since September 19th.
It was just really a reminder.
And we're now going to begin the public portion of the meeting. To be due upon a order, we'll clerk this call room.
Councilmember Egan.
Here.
Council Vice President Escobar is absent. Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Garladi.
Present.
Council President, we see.
Here.
Please be advised of the motion requirements, you open the public maniac, and complies with the satisfying and on notice. Which gains efficient notice of time and place of conduct of all voted conveniences. So council, the City of Brunswick, filed with the city clerk, placed on appropriate bulletin board lobby of City Hall, and has been transmitted to the New York newspaper, City of Brunswick, and on New Street. Pleasantly leave us, please.
Please be advised, the United States of America, and the Republic of America, for this case is one nation, and God, and this is all, with liberty and justice for all.
Could you make stand for a moment, sound for all those who are in their lives in conflicts and emergencies? Thank you. We have minutes from July 18th.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Correct. Roll call.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President, we see.
Aye.
We have ordinances on second reading, ODS 081204, ordinance to Grand Eaton for a portion of the right-of-way at Pine Street in the City of Brunswick at 279 Dibley Avenue. Anyone wish to comment on this ordinance? Mr. Cradell?
Charles Cradell Patterson Street. So I don't know, does that have anything to do with the improvements being made at Recreation Park? Or is this totally separate?
I believe this is totally separate.
It's totally separate. It's in response to the request of the property. I think we wanted to be able to fence in this property. And in doing so, needed an easement on a small portion of our property.
Anyone else? Make a motion to accept the orders?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President, we see.
Aye.
ODS 081205, an ordinance to vacate a portion of Comstock Street and a portion of Delvet Street in the City of Brunswick. Anyone from Republicans to comment on this ordinance? Mr. Cradell?
Charles Cradell Patterson Street. I wanted to know, what is the purpose of this?
This has to do with the redevelopment up on Handy and Jersey Avenue. To vacate a portion of that street for some of the development that's going to be done.
And so by vacate, that means?
Mr. Abson?
Vacate, it means vacating the city's rights to it. It goes back to the adjoining property owners, which would be the redeveloped there. So it goes to them, so they can develop the project they were looking for.
Okay, so by law, the land reverts to whoever's next to it? Okay, and so the redevelopment question, it's ended with properties. And so they own all the property near or around these roads in question?
Yes.
Okay, so that means they own this?
Address the place, I don't know.
Dead end of Comstock Street. Let's see. That is taken today. And is there anybody here who would know if they have any record of being cited for not meeting the property limits?
I don't know if there's anybody here.
Do you know any tracks?
It's the dead end of Comstock Street. I think it's 250 Comstock Street in that vicinity.
I know it number. I'll be a part tomorrow.
I, no, I don't. We could check the system tomorrow, but...
Check.
I don't know if there's been any citations, but I think this game, I hope to talk to Mr. Maroney about coming out there and inspecting if they're... Mr. Cradell, bring those conditions to our attention. Thank you, and then we'll go try to address them.
Yeah, I'll get them cleaned up, if that's the case. If it's our responsibility to get cleaned up, it's theirs to cite them for not being able to keep it.
You keep it. Yeah, and so in light of this, I would ask that you table this ordinance. Probably unwise to move forward with giving more land to someone if they haven't maintained the land they have now.
I would, I would do that, but I'm not going to do it because this has been going on for many months as it is. It would have been helpful if this was brought to our attention by us, who I think we should take care of it or make him take care of it sooner than later instead of putting it off where he'll be this coming year again. So I'm not going to hold it down.
Right, respectfully disagree. If you want to support people maintaining their property, you should note the disordance.
Anyone else? Motion.
Motion.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Egan.
No.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President, we see.
Aye.
Orders on first reading, ODS 091201, an ordinance to amend and supplement the advisory on ordinance to the City of Brunswick, Chapter 12 Traffic and Parking, deleting two handicap parking zones, 1 and 5 Freedom Street, like Townsend and Livingston Avenue.
Motion to approve the ordinance setting down Wednesday, September 19th, at 6:30 p.m. Republic here, same date to be advertised.
Second, roll call.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President, we see.
Aye.
ODS 091202, salary ordinance for FMBA 217, for 2009 to 2014.
This, I'm sorry, this contract is for the superior officers, Mr. Egan, for, I should mention that maybe it was misunderstood for the rank and plot, but it's the superior officers.
Motion to approve the ordinance setting down Wednesday, September 19th, 6:30 p.m. Republic here, same date to be advertised.
Second, roll call.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President, we see.
Aye.
We have resolutions, RDS 091201, and RDS 091241. What they want from the public was to comment on any of these resolutions? 43, Mr. Council President, I'm sorry, you said 41? I'm sorry, it's a 43 to 43. Cradell?
Sir. Thank you kindly for the opportunity to address you about these. Charles Cradell Patterson Street. Just wanted to note on O4, what did we do to earn the Quality of Life Award?
Captain Miller?
What was the question?
What did we do to win the Quality of Life Award from the county prosecutors?
We don't win it.
Yes.
It's a grant. It's a grant that the county prosecutor offered to every municipality in the county. We filled out the appropriate application, and he provided us with $5,000.
And what's that going to do?
How it is?
It's going to be, it's used for quality life, and has to be used between September and December of this year. The money is going to be used for extra patrol officers on the north side of town, primarily for the Brockers community coming back.
Thank you. For the one ending in 13, the rebid of the emergency housing shelter, why is it being...
Mr. Cradell?
Nobody responded to the question, so thank you.
Wanted to commend everybody for steering some funds to Women Aware, an excellent organization that does great work in the city. Question on number 18, the license transfer, who's getting the license, what's happening with it?
Mr. Cradell is here at the New, representing the... The new council president say that if a new applicant, new operator, person to person at the same particular location, I understand your documentation is similar operation that existed there previously under this Club B or the word right. That's correct.
Thanks.
Okay.
The Feast of Park Basketball, is that going to be, is that an open league? Who's the individual that's running it and responsible for it?
This gentleman has been doing this for the past few years, for a number of years, in the rest of the union. And I don't think it's affiliated with our reputation for him. But he's been doing this for the...
And so if I want to play?
I think that's a random. For that.
For the league itself, that's a...
They pull to, and they're the hardest, and it's not getting ready to take, only at one late.
But he's been doing this for a number of years, with the Feast of Parks.
Just want to commend you on 24 as well, the Walk Bike Class Teen Initiative is very good. Wanted to ask, what is the, what is Let It Grow Inc., 28 and 29, what's that about?
Council President, that is a contract, the name of the contractor, who formed the sidewalk repair services. We need to respond. To sidewalk repairs. Exactly.
The 32 is an agreement regarding the new street apartments, what's the nature of the agreement?
The city's made a home grant, was actually a deferred loan to the project. And what we're doing here is to subordinate our position to the primary lender, which is Bank of America, providing the great majority of the finance and to us that we would be in the second position behind them, which is typical of all of these loans, that we would go behind the private lender.
That's true. The next one, Highway Safety Grant, what does that go with to?
Captain Miller? Highway Safety Grant is money provided by the New Jersey State Department of Transportation to provide funds for purchases made the previous year. And this money is supplementing a portion of a police car that was used for one corridor on traffic safety.
Okay. And the Edward Burr Memorial Justice Assistant?
The DAG grant is $96,249, which is being shared by four police departments. New Brunswick is the administrative department. It's New Brunswick Edison or the Amboy Woodbridge. New Brunswick Sheriff, the grant is $36,931, which will be towed to purchase another patrol vehicle.
Perfect. And I didn't get a chance to look at 38, the New Brunswick Alliance Application, am I clear on what that is?
That's an annual application that Dave Flebbs and the YSS team makes application for from the county. Funds through that program, Dave uses in the after-school and summer play stage programming. It's got an anti-drug, anti-alcohol, anti-vulcan kind of theme to the grant.
Sorry for asking me so many questions, I only have two more. The 42 is that, it seems, it's unusual coming to me, because I don't see stuff like this very often. What is the circumstance, the requirements?
Mr. Council President, it was apparently means that we're paying a drop by outside lien holders. The resolution simply authorized the mayor and city clerk to execute the documentation to release the means on the property. Those have been pretty regular.
And then the last one, 43, what's the purpose of it, why is it non-pro-tunca?
Captain Miller, Think GIS, you familiar with that?
I don't like. I think that added here.
It's a software mapping program that's provided by...
I did see that, I'm not gonna lie to you. I think that's counties providing that.
They are, and I think it has something to do with...
What?
Down there, it's sort of drug enforcement, originally.
It's a mapping program, I believe.
So it's a, it's GIS mapping that masks the error, obviously, GIS coordinates.
Certainly.
So they can use the, it's being done non-pro-tunca because of, I believe, it was already distributed to the towns. We're not the only town, they're new to this product forward at this point, which I think will be expanded later, but... Since the city already had it, we had to do the resolution, because there was no resolution.
Right, and is there an amount for the cost?
I think they're providing us with the software.
They estimate annual maintenance thereafter to be like $50.
One license.
$51. It's a contributory right of participating municipalities for the maintenance of that software.
Okay, so it's already provided for?
Yes, by the county, actually, it's probably a homeless recovery grant.
Thank you very much. You're welcome.
Anyone else on any of the resolutions?
Who's a resident?
Yes, ma'am, on any of the resolutions?
32, I think it's very clear. Says New Street Park, Department of Renewal Associates LLC, so that's a pilot project?
So I can hear what you're saying.
So I know there's a pilot program.
That's not what this is involved with, there is a pilot for that project, but this action doesn't have anything to do with that.
I just wanted to know, is this that new building that the figure of New would work?
Yes.
Is that going to be low-income housing, or is it, why is this house over there?
There are a portion of the units there will be for low and moderate income housing, 20% of the units will be set aside for that. There's a total of 104 units there, 21 will be low and moderate income housing.
Anyone else? We'll choose from 091225. Motion to approve the resolutions?
Second. Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi.
Aye.
Council President, we see.
Aye.
Is anyone from, I'm sorry, new correspondence? No, we have no correspondence. Anyone from the council wish to address the public? Anyone from the public wish to address the council? Mr. Cradell?
Charles Cradell Patterson Street. I'll try to keep it short. Today, there was a fire alarm at 1 Spring Street, and it occurred to me, I wanted to know, what is our firefighting capacity? If there was a fire high up at the top of one of these tall buildings?
Yes.
Director? Did you hear the question? I don't understand the question.
If there were a fire on the 21st floor of the 23rd floor of a tall building, would the, the Brooklyn fire trucks be able to?
No fire truck is going to reach the 21st floor of any building. But we have what's called high-rise equipment that is specialized for high-rise fire.
Any idea on what the equipment is?
The break, the building's also springed. Director, without, what kind of equipment, the question was kind of quick in the air. What kind, what is high-rise equipment? It's hoes and other equipment that we would take up to the floor below the fire, hook it up to the standpipe system, and go up to the next floor and fight the fire.
Thank you very much. I have to ask you about the rather expensive settlement that I guess the city's agreed to pay out in the case involving, I guess, a big mistake made by the New Brunswick Police Department. What are your thoughts on that?
My thoughts are that whatever they negotiate between the two parties, evidently both came to the agreement on it. Didn't go to court, I don't know the exact details, besides what I read in the newspaper. And if both sides are satisfied with the award, then they'll be satisfied with it as well.
And is anything being done to prevent this from happening to other people? And is anything being done to prevent this from happening to other people?
Captain, any programs in place on preventing this type of thing?
I wouldn't be able to comment, I won't prevent that, I mean, I don't know, I wasn't privy to what went on in the litigation. And to improve, just what I read in the paper as well, I think it said in the paper, to improve what happened and what didn't. It was a private thing, so I don't know what there would be preventing. I mean, the case in general talks about excessive force, and there is already drivers in place. You have to do internal affairs process to take care of excessive force.
I'm glad you brought that up, the internal affairs, has there been an investigation into this, has it been resolved?
Yeah. Yes.
What, how was it resolved, what was the disposition?
No comment on internal affairs investigations.
There you have it. You have any comment on Brad Videl resigning from the police force?
I don't know.
Well, I know you, for the longest time, you had always said that you can't comment on it because there's an ongoing investigation. Now the investigation's over, you really don't have any thoughts on?
He resigned, I have to see the city to resign.
Are you glad he resigned?
I have no comment, I have to see the city to resign.
Just wanted to let you all know, I had raised an issue before, that on the city website, the city council is still under departments, which I don't think is accurate, it should be under government. And still has not been changed, so I wanted to make the council aware of that. Think you're more than just a department, think you should be more. Is there any plan for the relocation of the grease trucks when the new building is under construction?
Redevelopment hasn't even been designated for that yet, but DEFCO has been having some conversations with the owners of the grease trucks about what they want to do, they've also been talking to Ruppick University for some possible places to relocate them. And that's something we'll all work on, so that everybody can have their backups from the truck.
So, same answer as last time, nothing's changed. Any thoughts on the UMD and Jank, Rutgers collaboration?
I was pleased that medical school become a number of others, I'm not so sure about the other portion down south. But I was very interested about the medical school, I think Rutgers always deserved to have a medical school, so I'm glad of that. And I wish the new president, a lot of, a lot of things that he's gonna be doing.
Absolutely.
The organization he's talking about, it sounds good.
How successful has the new boat landing, the dock been?
I have to check with the counties, since they're positive. I can find out, I might have, I might hopefully remember, but. Other than that, I don't know if anybody here knows.
It's beautifully maintained, I would say lightly used.
Any thoughts on the rankings that came out about the high school in New Brunswick that it's?
I haven't seen that. I haven't seen anything on that. I can check with Mr. Kaplan on the court of education, but I'm not really aware of anything like.
Well, we had discussed the graduation rate was the poorest in the county. And I know now these new formulas have been created and stuff, and it really were in the bottom part of the state as well. What is your, what is your vision, what is the council's vision for improving that, or putting a stop to that?
Well, as a teacher, first of all, I was discussing somebody, I was discussing with somebody urban education. And you cannot use the same measures and the same paradigms that you use in other districts. And what happens is we get measured against other school districts. And what happens in the urban education setting, you have an overabundance of kids who are special needs kids, you have kids who are first language kids, you have kids who are lower income kids. What happens is everybody gets thrown into one pot, and they get measured by the same standard by testing. What happens, urban education is much bigger than it's just gonna be a local issue. What has to be done is the state or even the country has to look at a different paradigm when you measure that. It can't just be testing, because it only tells you how the kids took that test that day. And anybody that works in education, you know that you have to have holistic approach to children in a lower income area. So what starts to happen is now you have to look at a different measurement. You have to say, okay, what are some of the outside factors on what that kid did during that time? You know, do they have parental involvement? A lot of times, people will complain about the dropout rate, but they never come to school to find out what's going on and how their kids are being educated. And unfortunately, in a lot of our towns, which I teach in one of those areas, where we don't have a lot of parental involvement. You also have lower, you also have factors, lower income factors, where kids may not be able, maybe the parents can't get to the school. Or maybe the parents did not graduate, we have a, I have a high incidence where parents do not, the parents didn't graduate themselves. So now, how are they gonna now help, you know, help their kids out? The first teacher in any household should be the parent first, and then it has to go to the schools. But unfortunately, what we do is we send our kids to schools, and then we complain about the dropout rate, and nobody does anything about it. So it's not just on a local level that you have to look, you have to look at the measurements, you have to look at the paradigm, you have to look at every single thing and what's thrown in. It's gonna take New Brunswick a while, that's a fact, we have a lot, we have a lot of those factors in our town. Especially when you expect a person who's maybe the first language in that household. You might be the first language in that household, and you expect them to pass a statewide test. It doesn't happen, it might happen in each Brunswick, it might happen everywhere else. A lot of these towns are gonna have to deal with the same thing that New Brunswick has to deal with. So it's on a, it's on a larger level than just here in New Brunswick.
And I would ask respectfully, what Mr. Fleming is planning to do about that?
What am I planning to do about it?
As a councilman.
Well, as a councilman that I just got, I mean, what I'm doing right now on a statewide level, I run a program right now as far as, and I know I can bring it to this town, but right now, in my school, what I decided to do about it is that I run a group, it's called the Talents of Ten, where we have a mentoring program that's set up in our schools, that the kids, we take the top kids in certain amount of classes, and they are mentored, they mentor the lower kids in the classes, and then you start to see it coming up. But it's not a crooked cut of thing, you could bring it to every single district. You know, we have to have people where you're willing to go to the state and to, you have to go to the state level, and you even have to go to the country, uh, the level, you even have to go to larger levels than that. Also, just in order not to prolong this, we want that, because right now, everything is dealt with testing. Everybody's saying, let's test, let's test, let's test, that's how we're gonna measure it. You know why they do that? Because you make money, because of, because the country right now, border state, you're making money off that test, because the kids are taking a HESPA test, that's a corporation. Who sits on the boards to decide, who sits on the boards to decide how the kids are gonna be measured? It's the same people who make those tests. Twenty years ago, you had, everybody was saying, let's use technology in the school. But guess what, you had people from IBM sitting on those same boards. So when they came out and said, well, what do you need in schools? We need technology, who's gonna make that money? Corporations make that money. We have to change how we educate our kids, and not sit back and just say, you know, cast the blame on one person, because one person can't do it. It's a holistic approach, and that's a fact, that's just the way it is.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And just a couple more things, I wanted to congratulate the firefighters and security officers on negotiating that contract, and also on fighting a couple of fires under the Hampton Club, there was an entire building, and something else on Sanford Street. So I commend them for that too, and want to thank them for their service. And as promised, would it kill you to turn the table? Please, face us.
Anyone else?
First of all, just ask the question to Mr. Fleming, do you teach in New Brunswick?
No, no.
You said that you can't factor, say for instance, a student that's per se from New Brunswick, as opposed to a student that's from South Brunswick. How do you factor in the added money? Shouldn't that, shouldn't that level of playing field out? When you have a kid from New Brunswick, and it's a city from New Brunswick that's getting government funding, it's an added school district, towards a South Brunswick student, doesn't get that added money, but you're saying there's still unequal playing field?
As money is distributed, added money, first of all, you look at, if we look at how much money we put towards kids, you know, how much we spend per student, some of that money unfortunately doesn't always get tripled down to a kid. A lot of times, we look at funding and say, let's toss money at the problem, let's toss money at the problem, and that money should be everything. That money should be the end-all, the get-all. But you have to look at, there's, that money goes towards special services in the schools, that money goes towards, you know, like you have special education, you have different things where that money goes to before any money actually gets to the kids. You know, like I said, before, you have to look at, you have to really look at how you're gonna educate that kid. Because you, sometimes you have some places that go spend fifteen thousand dollars, you know, which you should be able to, you know, should be able to raise. You gotta get the measurement, you know what I'm saying, once again, what's gonna be that measurement? Are you still gonna use, are you talking about test measurements? Or are you talking about, is that kid being educated holistically besides that? Are they now learning on a different level? You know, because you have to take it above, the testing level is only, I give you something, you reurge to take that back to me. When you bring them to a higher level of synthesis thinking, that's when they can, they can think through. You tell them, okay, you touched this, or you have this, now what level, it's a different part of your brain that's now being educated. We have to come up with a different way to measure that, or analysis. You know, when you get, I tell my kids all the time, my students all the time, when you get to college, everything you're gonna learn K through twelve, that's what you're gonna learn. Once you get to college, now the teachers now analyze what you've already learned, and how you process it. And that's what we gotta be able to bring back into schools, that, you know, we gotta be able to bring that back to the school system. Personally, I don't believe that money is the end-all, the get-all, because some places don't spend hardly any, but their kids are being educated.
So I mean, you have to actually put some responsibility on the teachers.
I would think more responsible is on the parents, actually.
I mean, you say it's parents, right? All right, well, my kids, they don't go to New Brunswick school system. And I'm at, I'm at liberty, I don't have, I don't not at every parent-teacher conference. But if my, if my daughter happens to drop at any time, I get an email from the teacher. She's concerned about my daughter, my daughter math skills dropped at one time. A math teacher elected to use her lunch to tutor my teacher while my daughter was on lunch. So if that's, I mean, and this is my daughter, she's an honorable student. You can, can you tell me that New Brunswick gets that same compassion from the teachers? Put this on the parents. And I don't, I don't respect the teachers getting off the hook, because if I'm a teacher, and they're not properly getting educated, then I'm just gonna let that slide, but as soon as there a budget cut, or a layoff, you got the teachers in the streets, I don't respect that. Well, I don't dwell on that stuff.
No, my kids do go to New Brunswick schools. And I'm, like I said, I have to take responsibility to, in order, I don't expect that teacher.
The parents that put these kids in the warehouse. Bottom line, the parents that put these kids in the warehouse.
Can I finish?
How many parents signed up to put those kids in the warehouse? Let's stop crying.
That's fine.
I just wanted to finish.
Now, this, everybody behind all these pucks is saying, the parents, how many parents signed up to put these kids in the warehouse? We could mumble jump all day long, it's cut and drop. Exactly, but I want to get back to, I want, I just want to, what was the progress on the boat situation?
On the which?
As far as the boat situation being docked from Edison to New Brunswick, did we get any progress as far as getting in?
Boat's gonna stay in Edison.
It's gonna stay in that sense, permanently?
Yes.
Okay, and how many officers, if any, are qualified to operate this boat in case of another emergency?
Either captain or director.
How many officers are?
I don't have, I don't know the exact, I don't wanna say, in the neighborhood as well, I don't know how many that exactly.
All those officers on duty twenty-four seven, all day, every day, as far as like, do they rotate shifts?
Ships are rotated, yes.
They are, okay. Also, I want to know, get more from you with the NPT, and what that actually consists of, and which officers are involved with that?
Captain, the NPT stands for Neighborhood Police Team. There's certain, I don't know which officers, you know, by name are on those units, but there are officers that are on a special unit, which goes to areas of concern in the city, and gives that a more proactive police approach using the community police model.
Are these officers from the neighborhoods that they patrol?
I do not know.
Can I get a list of the officers that are on the NPT?
You can call the captain of operations, the state.
Captain of operation?
The captain of operations is Captain Savo, however, we don't, you know, give out what time and where people are working.
No, no, I just wanted to know the officers that are involved on the actual NPT.
You could ask the captain of operations, I don't know.
Also, just wanted to brush up on, also, the lawsuit situation with, you know, the hundred and twenty thousand dollars that the city of New Brunswick showed out in a settlement. And I just wanted to question, that's a nice, that's a nice sum of money. And I want to question, how many summer jobs did the city create for the inner-city youth?
Not quite sure what we have to do.
I'll get to that.
And I don't know how many the city.
Does anybody can tell me, did you, did you guys produce any summer jobs for the inner-city youth this summer?
Yes.
President, yes.
How many?
Many.
How many, you have approximate number?
Dozens.
Dozens?
Yeah.
One, two dozens, maybe?
Dozens.
Dozens? All right, because I did a little breakdown, my math is not good, because I moved to retro school, but I did a little breakdown. One, three, I did. If you took inner-city teens, and you paid them the minimum wage of seven twenty-five, worked six hours a day, five days a week, at the end of the summer, that student can earn sixteen hundred dollars. Now, we all know that people join gangs more during the summer than any time period. So if we would have took that hundred and twenty thousand, that hundred and twenty thousand dollars and provided these kids with summer jobs, that would have employed seventy-five kids that could have possibly joined gangs. We had seventy-five kids that we would have took off the streets, but instead, we chose to use that money to support officers in their wrongdoing. I need somebody to answer to that, because dozens of jobs, it's not gonna, you create dozens of jobs. We could have had seventy-five jobs for these inner-city students that would have brought sixteen hundred dollars and an eight-week program back to school. Two hundred and seventeen dollars a week they could have earned, but we threw a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to support crooked officers. Is there any loose, is there way, next summer, we could spend the money more wisely?
Have to budget, and if you're a program that are administrator and officials, look at, see what's going on.
Good to be here. I definitely wanted to see that progress and be, I guess, a part of it also, possible. And also, I want to know, what's your take on you guys' involvement, with Scott Gould being involved with this settlement? Being that he's the supervisor of the, let me get, let me get it straight, the, what does he just got to do supervisor of? The Community Outreach Unit. So, I mean, this settlement was in two, twenty-ten, when allegedly, you know, these officers did whatever to these two nineteen-year-old college students. He was deemed Community Outreach Supervisor after twenty-eleven, after this incident happened. And I don't, I don't understand, why was the city, why did the city allow this officer to be supervisor of the Community Outreach Program when he had ongoing harassment and abuse case, I mean, yeah, harassment case going on? I want to know why would they, she was this officer to be the Community Outreach Supervisor?
I don't know what process that implied, it's named and how it was set up.
This settlement, the settlement was reached in two thousand and twelve.
Two thousand, two thousand and twelve? Well, no, the charges, the charges came in two thousand and twenty.
I thought you said settlement.
No, no, the charges, twenty-ten.
And our defense counsel was prepared to defend the action against us, and decided, made a recommendation that a settlement was a better position to take, without anyone accepting guilt or being charged with guilt. It was a settlement that both parties agreed to reach.
So, so what did the offices involve, you guys choose to be one of the supervisors of the Community Outreach Program? Is that the case? Captain, is that true?
I think there's a lot of, right, I think there was no charges, and there's no guilt, I mean, it was an allocation, it doesn't mean right or wrong or anything.
And, and just let me.
Wait, wait, let me just.
You asked a question, wait a minute, let me just. It was settled with no admission of liability on either part. And the settlement had to do with the city of New Brunswick and the New York County prosecutors office. And we paid a portion, and they paid a portion, and as to Sergeant Gould, he was a, he only became a defendant at the very last end of it.
Doesn't matter.
And so, you asked a question for me, I just want to answer.
It doesn't matter.
Okay, so then I went.
No, I mean, because you're trying to sell me like, if, you know, say for instance, if someone is convicted of pedophile.
He wasn't convicted.
And then, no, no, say if someone is charged with pedophile, and they get, they get found not guilty, I'm gonna let them run my daycare center? That's what you guys did.
That is an unfair analogy.
That is, that's a same analogy. He beat two nineteen-year-old kids up, and I find that just as disrespectful as the officers that was involved with Barry Coloch and any other person. These are babies, these are kids, nineteen-year-old kids, and he's a Community Outreach Supervisor.
You are entitled to your opinion, you're not entitled to all the truth, because that is not what happened.
That's a fact, all right, that's. Is he, no, no, this is what I'm saying, because you guys may be downplaying this, but this is a serious situation. This person is gonna talk into people in the community when he was already charged with jumping on two nineteen-year-old college students.
I don't believe he was charged with anything.
Well, he was not.
He was not charged.
Was his name, was it, his name was involved? Well, anyway, all right, I see that, I understand, you guys have compassion for the people that does wrongdoing. But also, and also, December, what was it, twenty-eleven? But also, and also December, what was it, twenty-eleven, all the officers went through a special, I guess after the Barry Deloche situation, they went through a certain program, I guess for intensity, or what is it called? Diversity and Community Awareness Program. Each officer was involved with that program. I want to know the effectiveness of it, because I guess five weeks later, a young man was shot even after these officers underwent this program. Like, would they reiterate? So was there a program after that, after the January thirty-first incident?
I don't know if there was a program after the January thirty-first incident. The program, as you just say, was in December of two thousand and eleven. I don't know if there's a way to measure the effectiveness of the sensitivity program that he has quantified.
The officer was successful if there's a shooting four weeks after.
I don't know if you even, even put those two together with whatever the circumstances were that led to the shooting as opposed to that sensitivity.
But the two officers...
Totally unrelated.
The two officers, what, who is sensitive?
That's fine, I think they're totally unrelated, I think it's unfair to try to, try to connect over those things. It just doesn't fit.
Okay, that's because by Officer Verdel was on, Officer Maison was on the sensitivity program? Being that he's actively on...
I do not know.
Does Captain know?
I don't know what Officer Maison did or did not, I can find out pretty good in the community.
Anyone else?
Warren Hernandez, that was, Warren, he runs, graduated from University of Christ one oh seven and recently graduated from Berbers University, May twenty-fourth. There is a big problem in the New Brunswick school system, one of them being the counseling for, for college, for, for the preparation. A few years ago, a few councils, a few councils required for just the grades of football players and helping them out while the rest of the population wasn't, wasn't being helped. I work with teams, I work with 4H and AmeriPort currently, like I said, I just graduated. And the teams that I work with have come with me with issues and questions about college. And they're not being prepared, they're not being taught the fundamentals of getting into college or what is required of them. I have a few students who go to the Health Science College High School, and they've been told, look, you're not going to go anywhere because you're undocumented, when universities such as Rutgers don't, don't view that as a requirement they have to school. So they're being fed false information, I was wondering if that can be changed, or if these councils can be retrained.
Have you gone to the Board of Education?
Yes, I have, and they completely ignore that. And we also, like I said, I also work for 4H, which is a, it's a program that's been out for a hundred years. It's going into urban areas right now, and we've been shut down by the Board of Education saying that we don't offer any programming that is acceptable by the school, when in reality we do. And I was wondering if you, if, if I could get a recommendation from you, from you to go to the, to Captain, to see if we can get our programming into the New Brunswick schools. We already have a good relationship with the church school. Excuse me?
Have you gone to Captain already?
Yeah, we have, and...
Did you present writing?
Yes, my, my former boss did, and it was...
Writing or tour?
Oh, writing. Writing.
I can follow up with?
Oh, I can get you an information, if I can get your contact info?
We'll send it to the clerk.
All right. Can I get his or her contact info?
Yeah, you can get it, go to this office right here, you can brief the C-Ball.
So, yeah, and in regards to the, Mr. Fen, Glenn?
Fleming.
Fleming. I do agree with the rent and bond, that needs to be a priority in New Brunswick. I also, forgot my last point, but thank you for your time.
Teresa Vivar, I'm a executive director of Latin American Community Organization, and also I'm a resident of New Brunswick for already sixteen years. I know, we know the problem is not only finding involvement, but also the acceptance of the community that exists. And I think it's time for us to understand that and work together. We know the problem. The thing is that how we're going to come together and find a common solution. It's not that parents don't want to be involved, it's just, and I've been hearing in my office all the time, how it has been certain people rejected them all the time when they bring issues or suggestions, and they don't pay attention to it. And sometimes comes to the PTAs or PTOs. I think we have to work together towards helping this problem. We have been presenting as an organization different programs, not only in the New Brunswick 4H, but also all the boroughs into the, into the city, you know, trying to organize things for youth. And always we try to work with the, for education, well, not only with that, but with the whole city we encounter, this, you know, I would say like, no willingness to work with us. Parents want to work, and I understand that in a community, there is a lack of education into how to interact with, with certain people, because in our countries we let certain teachers, we believe in the teachers, and the teachers take the direction of the kids. Here it's not, it's another system. But if you guys don't work with us, allow us to work with us, then we try. We are not many leaders in the community, but the ones that we are in front, we try to cooperate the most that we can. But if they still deny and that we exist, and we start encountering this unwillingness to work with us, then the problem is going to continue. I'm being, I'm being, going to different schools, trying to work with the principals, and they always counter that, go to the core education. Go and ask this person, because they don't listen to us. If you go and ask them, maybe mine be changed. But the thing is, when I, I organize parents and everyone to, into the, into the conversations, nobody pay attention, or they just listen to it, but they don't do anything. And I think I'm willing to work with the city, I'm willing to work with the core education, but we must accept that we also have parents who care. Otherwise, I'm serious, I'm, I'm know what is happening right now. We don't want kids to be there, and we don't want more gangs. I'm hearing a legal license being, you know, it's going to raise. How many places for you we have in New Brunswick, and how many bars we have? I want good places, and we're willing, if you ask us for one dollar, ten dollars, let's waste the money? It's not that we don't want to contribute, we want our kids in a better place. But instead of that, we're building other things, I know it's going to be good things for the community, but not all parents are going to be allowed to pay, for example, thirty dollars for, take the kid to the fitness center. I'm just, you know, pointed to, to refer that, if, if, I understand the miscommunication among communities that exist in New Brunswick, but we must accept and do something because the community exists and is very diverse. And I think if we start looking into leaders that can work with us and find solutions, things are going to change, and I'm here, I'm willing to do the best that I can, because I'm a mother of three kids. And my son, when I changed it from New Brunswick Middle School to the other school, I mean, to the charter school, to the middle school, she says, Mom, don't send me there because they're the kill. No, the people don't get killed there, it's just the people that talks about it. It's a valid question that people has about it, and we must do something about it. So my resolution is that people is not unaware of the problems. It's more than you guys must be willing to work with us.
One more point, and our programming is free. 4H is free programming. The programming that allows those officers is also free.
Just make sure you, you, or, or, if you follow up.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? Kinga Bujer?
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Haradi?
Aye.
Council President, we say aye.